This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Good evening, everybody. Good night. I'm not that tired. We're gonna welcome you to the May 10th School Committee Meeting, and we're going to call it in. Shannon Dunham will not be able to make it tonight, so we have everybody else. Megan?
Megan Harvey here.
Miren?
Aaron Goldstein here.
Lori?
Sorry, Garcia here.
Mayor LaChapelle?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Ben?
Ben Hershey here.
And Cindy Kozinski here. Okay, I don't have any announcements to make right now, so let's go right on to correspondence. Megan, did we have any correspondence?
We do. I have three pieces of correspondence, one from Shelley Fournier, who wrote about wastewater data and surveillance data, I think with just sort of informational info about that. Pilar Goldstein D, who emailed with some questions about long COVID and if we have any information about how long COVID has impacted this particular community and school district, which we do not have at this time, but is a really interesting question. And to the extent that I'm able to, I'd love to look into that. And then we also received an updated email from Sean Chan, and I'm not sure that I'm able to share the contents of it, but an update on the perspective from that end, from his end of situation.
Okay, all right. And do we have gifts? I know the answer to this.
We do. I'd like to make a motion to approve the attached list of gifts to the East Hampton High School We the People, and you know what? I didn't pull that up, so I'm gonna have to hold. I'm guessing this is in my backup information, huh?
Yeah, that's the backup, and there are probably sixty, sixty names.
Yes.
I don't think you have to.
Yeah. So perhaps I'll just say that there's a long list of folks who have generously donated to the East Hampton High School We the People team, and we thank all of them. And I have a motion, I'd like to make a motion to approve those gifts from that nice generous list.
Yeah, there were about sixty people there. I was looking at it. I wish I had totaled them all. What a phenomenal number of people have already donated to We the People. And what I heard from Sue is that there's another list coming at our next meeting. So that's quite incredible. So do we have a second to accept these wonderful donations?
Second.
Okay, any comments before we vote? I'm just saying.
Congratulations to our We the People team. They did an awesome job going down to DC. And thank you for all your hard work and preparation, and then doing your best down there in DC and representing East Hampton.
Yeah. Thank you. So Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Lori?
Sorry, Garcia, aye.
Aaron?
Aaron Goldstein, aye.
Mayor LaChapelle?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
And Cindy Kozinski, aye. I just, I'm astounded at that list. It is unbelievably long. And to think that others are coming is incredible. Thank you, everybody.
With the list that's coming, I'll total them all up perhaps for the next list, so I can report out a total.
Yeah, sounds good. And maybe what we could do is, what I'd like to do is like maybe kind of list how many businesses, but how many just donate, you know, donors there were. And then I, I'm wondering, what I'd like to see is if we could at least, Dr. Leclair, could we create a thank you list? We don't have to put the amounts there, but a thank you list that could be a fifty peso? Just as a way of acknowledging all of the people who have donated, and we could like wait till the next list comes? I think it's important. Okay, that sounds great. I do not see anybody else here tonight. So we don't have a student representative update, so we're gonna move on from that. We do public speak now, and is there anybody? This is a very tiny group tonight. Is there anybody who would like to say anything from the public? I'm gonna give it a minute, since it is, we're getting there. I'm gonna give it like thirty more seconds. I don't see anybody even coming in attendance. It's a very tiny group tonight. All right, I'm gonna close public speak. All right. We have under presentations, a new school update?
Yes, can I have the ability to show my screen?
Yep, hold on. There you go. Awesome.
Okay, so. What are the things you want to show up when you go to do a presentation? Don't show up. I don't understand. Let me try it again. Okay.
There we go.
Okay, so I have just an update for everyone this evening, and I will put this on our website tomorrow, because I think that the pictures are are really nice, and I hope that parents will begin to get excited about the project. I am not the creator of all these photos. I took a few of them, but our construction team and our project managers walk through and share photos every week with me. So just to let everyone know, Mountain View Elementary School is plugging away, and the inside is almost 100% done. If you take into consideration, we still have punch list items to do, that sort of thing. The plan, it really has shifted now to finishing up the outdoor spaces. So we took some time last week, and we brought staff, elementary staff, through the building on the half day. And staff earlier last week received their room numbers, that sort of thing, so they all knew exactly where they wanted to go once they got into the area. So I have some pictures to show everyone this evening. You can see here is just the, kind of the overall message is that Mountain View is on time, and it's on budget. So we're one of the, probably the only projects underway right now that is on budget. According to our construction team, we're doing a really good job of keeping things really tight. So this is just a picture of a classroom. I'll show you several more. And just to show you that the classrooms are completed, most of the furniture is installed, the hallways and the offices are completed. This is an office up on the second floor off of the library. It will maybe be used for a counselor. We're not quite sure yet. Here is a typical early elementary classroom, and by early elementary, I mean this is probably a first grade, kindergarten or first grade classroom. We made the decision early in the project to have desks at all the grades and not tables, because as we entered COVID, we thought that there needed to be more flexibility. So there are tables in preschool, but that's the only grade that has tables. And you can see that even though we moved to desks in kindergarten and first grade, they can be configured because of the shape of the desks in so many ways. In little, you know, in little circles, or separately, you'll see some other photos. You'll see that the furniture is new. I'll point out some other things in the classroom. We have a lot of, you see these round little, they almost look like little stools. They have a little give on the bottom, so they're kind of like wobble stools, and they offer flexibility for students that kind of get a little wiggly. You'll see if you look far enough into this classroom on the left, that there's a whole kitchen for dramatic play. You can see all the counters and cupboards in the back of the room. And each room is configured slightly differently. The picture on the right is a corner room. You can tell because it has two walls of windows, so that's at the end of a hallway. You can see the little cubbies for students to put their jackets and backpacks. Those are inside the classroom on the elementary side. Remember, the middle school side has lockers out in the hallway, but on the elementary side, they're in the room. Here's just a few more angles, a few more pictures. I would point out just a few other things. You can see some of our nice chairs. They don't scuff up the floor. There's ample bookcases in the rooms, again, dramatic play. We have horseshoe tables for reading instruction. You may notice the different colors on the floor. In the, in the picture on the right and on the picture on the, on the left, the orange area is what we're calling the safety zone. And so that is a visual representation for students of where to go in an emergency. It's at the front of the room normally, and if the door, the classroom door gets closed, an intruder in the hallway cannot see anyone that's in the orange zone. So it's a visual reminder for safety for students. You can also probably note that it's very bright in these classrooms. We don't have hard fluorescent lights. We have a lot of natural light, and the lights in the ceiling are softer. You'll also notice kind of the walk or the, you can see into the next classroom. And there's little, there's a pullout space there, and I'll show you that in a moment. Here's another view of a classroom. And so they're all configured just slightly differently. The bookcases and the book, the cubbies may be in slightly different areas, but you can see how far the classrooms are. They're pretty much ready for students to walk into them as soon as teachers put the finishing touches and lay the rugs down. This on the left is a pullout room that's located between two classrooms. It has a kidney-shaped table and more wobble seating. We have a lot of flexible seating. This is where testing could happen, pullout services, OT, speech and language, special ed. Students can work on projects in here. They can have reading groups in here. There's whiteboards on both sides of the walls. The door has a glass panel in it so that the teacher can see in there. If the door is closed, most likely it would be open. More classroom images. You can see in the right side here, the dramatic play items that we have. Those are for the preschool kindergarten classrooms. Here's the entrance at the elementary side. This is the reception area. The main office on the elementary side. There'll be two adults, two admin assistants stationed in that area. There'll be seating for guests. And on the right is a typical administrator's office. Simple, but very nice. Everything new, so they're very pleased with that. We also have a small internal suspension area in this elementary area. There's a records room. There's a mail room, so there's a lot of other pieces. This is the elementary school library media center. The furniture is just delivered in there. It's not situated the way that it would be. But I hope you take note of the lighting. We have some really unique lighting, and again, it's not harsh fluorescent lights. We have kind of a wood ceiling, if you will. It's, it's nice and spacious for little ones. I'll show you a couple of different angles. You can see in the picture on the right, there's like a little stage area almost, but it's also a place where students can sit and read when they're in the library. So there's a lot of different seating. And I don't think you can tell by these images, but if you look to the image on the right, you can almost see the pattern of the metal framing that's over the window. It's all different children skipping along, playing outside. There's a child in a wheelchair. It's really, it's really lovely. We had that specially designed for that window, but it diffuses the light. You can see the book return area and the library desk. You can see all the stacks. And remember back, I don't know if it's this group, it might be the school building committee. They met with Jackie Janulowicz, the middle school librarian, who's overseeing the purchase of new books for the elementary side as well as the middle school side, because we haven't hired the librarian for this side yet. Here is a typical upper elementary classroom. I think if you look on the left-hand side, the left-hand picture, you can see all the writable wall spaces. They're kind of covering all the walls. We're not putting tacks and nails in walls. All of the writable wall spaces are magnetized, so teachers can use them for a lot of different practices. You'll see again the different colors in the floor. You can see a safety zone is in the light color. These desks are just set up differently. It's not necessarily the way they're going to be set up. The teachers have not gone in there and set up their classrooms the way they want, but I think the furniture installers are just demonstrating different ways that furniture can be installed in the classrooms. So this would be a third and fourth grade wing. Here's the art room. And the art room, what's different about the art room is it has, it has a continuation of the terrazzo floor, which it could literally, all kinds of things can be spilt on it, and it will be fine. The kiln is off to, in a separate room. It's a very bright space, but it's also very industrial. If you look up to the top, you'll notice it has more of an industrial ceiling space than the typical classrooms did. There are tables and stools in the art room. It's just better use of that space for the art teacher. There's ample display space, ample work surfaces, multiple sinks. Regular classrooms just have one or two sinks, but the art room has multiple sinks on this side and in another area, and has a lot of storage in the art room, more so than what's in the regular classrooms. So it's just a really, really neat space. Both of our art classes on the elementary and the middle side are really wonderful spaces. I think some of you may have toyed the building before. This is the elementary cafeteria. It's currently in use. The middle schoolers are using it right now. But this will be the cafeteria. You can see some of the same ceilings, some of the same lighting. In the picture on the right, you can see more of the floor-to-ceiling windows, and there's a patio beyond that, and we have picnic tables that will be going out there so that students will be able to eat outside supervised during nice weather. And so it's a very large space, very bold, colorful. The colors are much more vibrant and saturated on the elementary school side, and they're much more muted on the middle school side. Here is a typical hallway. This is the preschool kindergarten hallway. It's an extremely long hallway, one of the longest hallways we have. But you can see the use of color, again, in the floor and on the walls. There are writable wall spaces going down the hallway. You can see again, I point out, we didn't go with the harsh fluorescent lighting going all the way down. We have different lighting choices. And what you see on the right is the, between the kindergarten classrooms, there are bathrooms that are shared between classes. So there would be two bathrooms just off to the right of the picture that have sinks in them, but then there's another sink right straight in front of you on the picture. There's also a changing table area if we have any students that have accidents. So it's just a multi-use area. Kindergarteners need to wash their hands a lot, so there's a lot of, there's also sinks in the classroom, so this just provides a lot of opportunities. And so that's shared between two classrooms. That's the only hallway that the bathrooms are shared. This is a typical small class space for two staff members. This would be a special education space for student support. They would pull out, there would be chairs around this table. There's different seating. They would work with students in there. There's a small office to the right. That would be an office or a testing area. So a lot of the furniture has arrived. Now here are some pictures of some areas that are in pretty good shape outside. These are at the ends of the wings, so you should notice the natural landscape, the flagstone rock paths, the Dry Creek rock beds. There's bench seating back here. So there are a lot of different places, and those are kind of at the end of the wings. And they're working a lot on landscaping there. So just kind of the timeline for where we're at. We did staff tours last week. Moving days for all three elementary schools will be in mid-July. And the moving would include all of the teachers' curriculum materials, files, the copiers, all of those things are all heading over, so there is a moving company. And that will take place over three days in July. The administrative team and the full year staff, the custodians, will move over around July 1st. They'll move into the new building. Summer school will be held totally in the new school this year. So that's summer school for our special education staff. Any additional programs will be, that we have will be housed in the new school. It's temperature controlled. It's the best place. We have the best play areas. And that way, we can move totally out of the elementary schools. Staff will have access to the classrooms to set up in August. Everyone likes to put their little touches in their classrooms. And we'll have lots of playgroups and summer activities that will be scheduled for August at Mountain View. You know, kindergarten playdates and ice cream socials and that sort of thing to get people into the building, get everyone acclimated to the new school. And then all students will begin in September as we planned. Everything is on time. So what the focus is on right now, finishing up the outdoor spaces, playgrounds, courtyards, the garden. They're also finishing up the entryway to the elementary school and the sidewalks. They're doing the parking lots and the bus loop. They're doing the maintenance building and the track and athletic fields. I have a few pictures of what they're working on now. So the picture on the left is the courtyard between the kindergarten wing and the first grade wing. They were laying the concrete the other day. And on the picture on the right, that's the courtyard between the first and second grade, and you can see that one is already done. So they'll each look a little bit different, but these are the spaces kind of between the two big wings, the three big wings of the building. So they're working on those. Those are teaching spaces. They're not play areas. They're teaching spaces for outdoor classrooms, scientific study, that sort of thing. And you can see, this is another angle of the finished courtyard between the first and second grade. So this is from the fire road that goes around the building. This is looking at the two wings that jut out. And you can see that it's, it's filling in nicely over the winter. And the picture on the right is just a continuation of some planting and some concrete that they're working on in the back. The picture on the left is the entrance to the elementary school with the flagstone. It's incorporated in the design. And then on the right, you can see the maintenance building going up, and that will be kind of off in the back of the parking lots. And that's all I have, so I'll stop my share. Does anyone have any questions about the school? Lori?
Thank you for that detailed tour. I can't wait to see it again. Is it possible for the public to reach those outdoor spaces easily? Or are they more secluded? That's what I'm curious about.
It is not easy currently to reach those spaces because they are behind kind of the construction area, so now would not be the time. I think when the building is totally open and the parking lots are done, it will be easier to access those areas.
This is not really a question, but more of a comment. It's looking at the classrooms and the building and the outdoor learning areas. It's kind of incredible to imagine the curriculum options expanding for teachers. Like the things that they can do on this site that they can't do now just seem phenomenal. I mean, it's really exciting to see that.
Yes.
The pictures, the pictures really visualize what might be possible. It's cool.
It is, it is, and there's so much green space, kind of, you know, with the woods in the back and everything. There's, there's a lot of opportunity for science in particular to go on little adventures outside, you know, for science lessons. So I think that will be really neat for the kids.
I was just gonna add in, Lori, I don't know if this is what you were referring to, but we walked over there to check it out with the family just a few days ago, and all of those areas were like in the back behind. Like as you're driving in, none of the kids are like having their learning right out in front in the parking lot. It's really, really, really nice. It's so beautiful. I can't wait for my kids to be there.
Oh, yeah, I, I, I'm sorry. I thought you meant.
I know you meant, yeah, I know you meant, just in case.
No, during the day, it's not an area where, there is a fire road back there for fire, for the, you know, fire department to come through, but it's not a road that would be open to the public during the school day. And students wouldn't be seen from the parking area. You'd have to really go out of your way to see the students.
Megan, you were reading my mind. Thank you.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, I did.
No, it's okay. Yeah, worry some mom thoughts. No, it's like, I can't wait for my kid. In fact, they did play a little bit on some of the equipment, and it was really fun.
And we are, we are, you know, the landscaping will also be such that it will be a visual barrier, you know, and hopefully will keep little ones from going outside of the play area. So the landscaping, we're still, you know, getting the finishing touches on that as well.
It's an incredible, incredible sight.
It really is. It really is a great building.
Yeah, every time I see the ongoing pictures when we do the school committee, the school building committee, it's amazing just to look at, at the growth. It's really exciting.
Yeah, and the track and field is also.
I know.
Yeah, getting going. So that'll be really exciting once we see that.
Yeah, I can't wait to see the maintenance building, which I was looking at that picture. There's just that structure there, and I know even that is gonna be a huge upgrade.
It will.
And I'm just glad we're on budget and we're on time.
Yeah, we're really, our construction team tells us that we did this project at the exact right time, because projects that are trying to get going right now, it is really difficult. The pricing is just outrageous right now. So we're really on the tail end, so we've, we've really lucked out.
I do have a question. When you took the staff through, how excited were they? What were they, what was the feedback?
I was talking to a principal today, so I took staff through, as did both of the principals and Dale Doron. And one of the principals said to me today, I saw people physically jumping up and down with their arms up in the air, yelling, running to their neighbor's classroom. Because remember, we're combining. Because remember, we're combining three schools too. So they picked, they, the, the game that they used was a bingo machine. And they had made a game. They all had a joint meeting and they made a game. They turned the bingo thing and pulled out a room number. And so it was random. So everyone was excited to find out what, what their room looked like and who was going to be next door to them and who was going to be across the hall. And people are really excited. I would say, everyone is excited, but I have to say, and, and I don't think the pictures did it justice. The kindergarten and preschool rooms, according to the MSBA dimensions that we were allowed to have, are 1,200 square feet, square feet. They are enormous classrooms. That's one room. They're like the size of some people's homes. I mean, the kindergarten and preschool teachers think they've died and gone to heaven. I mean, these rooms are enormous and they're the littlest, you know, customers that we have. And so the spaces are just beautiful. It's not like anything that any of the teachers have right now. And they all, they, they even commented, a few of them that I was with commented, well, now I see why I don't want to bring any of my junk over here, you know? They wanna, they wanna pare down and clean out their rooms because everything is so nice in these classrooms right now, you know? So they're really excited. It was very positive.
Do you have any idea when the books are gonna come into the media center? Is that gonna be?
Well, I know that a lot, I know that some of the books have been ordered. I have a feeling that some of them are arriving, but they're probably keeping them in the middle school media center for now until they get a librarian in there that can, you know, because they have to be coded and everything.
Okay.
And the books that we are keeping will, there are books that we are keeping from our elementary schools that will be moved over in the move in July.
Anybody else? All right, well, thank you. It's very exciting. So we're staying with you. Let's do update. And we're looking at a COVID out, update?
Yes. So the COVID response team met today. We've been reviewing our numbers and talking about trends. I think, Megan, if you had a chance to look at your email this evening, Megan did share the preliminary COVID dashboard with everyone on the committee. I think that goes out to the city tomorrow. Cases are going up a little bit in the city of East Hampton. And we are seeing a similar pattern in our schools. We've been keeping right around 30 or so for the last, I'd say, two or three weeks. As of today, I have 20. So I might get a little bit higher than 30 this week. I don't imagine it's going to be an enormous jump, but we are monitoring it. I, I will say that a couple of things that we talked about at the COVID response committee. I'm meeting with my leadership team tomorrow. And one of the things that we're going to be discussing is really utilizing the outdoor spaces again as much as we can, which they're already doing, but shifting some of our thinking to having events outside to continue to do that as much as possible, reminding people of that. Going back to getting around to the outdoor lunches if we can for some of our students under the tents, that sort of thing. So we're going to be talking on our leadership team about doing that. Also thinking about upcoming end of school year events that we want to hold outside as much as possible. And also reminding administration that now is the time when we should be opening windows. Now that I think, hopefully, the weather has finally shifted a little bit. Not at the middle school. That's not the place where, the middle school and the high school, we don't really open the windows as much because we get better airflow by keeping the windows closed because it's temperature controlled buildings. We're going to continue the practice that we started, that we've had in place, but I don't know that we talk about it that much. In the past two months, I think we have had two noted classroom clusters. And when we have a cluster in a classroom, we've corresponded with the families of that classroom only and asked them to send their students in masked for the remainder of the week, that sort of thing, to really try to mitigate the spread of the virus. So we've done that. We had an instance about a week and a half ago where we had four athletes on one of our teams test positive. So we shut down the team for several days and they did not practice or play. So we've been engaging in trying to be responsive to adding mitigation strategies when necessary. You know, in my weekly updates to families, I've been asking families to consider masking. I've given them different scenarios. I've encouraged people to test on the weekends. I really think that there are quite a few families that test on the weekends. One of our buildings had several cases reported on Monday morning and it was a result of people testing at home. So I, I feel really good about the fact that many families take this pretty seriously and are not only doing pool testing, but they're also testing at home in between. And they're catching, we're catching a lot of cases that way. Laurie, did you have a question?
Yes. I appreciate everything you're doing, Dr. Leclair. And I guess at times like this, I kind of miss being on that COVID response team to really hear the scuttlebutt. And I'm sure that Megan has asked, when will it be necessary to require more masks? I'm just guessing.
We did, we did talk about that today. And so we, again, are trying to stick with science. And so we are kind of relying on the CDC and they're.
But you know, I don't want to interrupt, but you know, many times we didn't do that because the CDC and DSE, nothing was agreeing. I just want to add because it's not a secret now that Williston, which is in East Hampton, has just mandated masks again, starting tomorrow because of the cases. And in West Springfield, I can tell you that a lot of certain departments, teachers now have COVID as of this week. So it's really spreading in the schools. So I just want to make you aware of that. I know you know it, but I really think that before waiting for the CDC to issue this guidance, that we should be careful so our students can have a good graduation, so they can have a prom. You know, we want to be able to have them celebrate, but I'm seeing everyone fall around me, Dr. Leclair. And I want to be in the forefront of saying we should keep East Hampton safe.
So what I would say, we discussed at the meeting today, we are not seeing the high rate of cases in our schools. We're seeing similar to what we've seen the past few weeks. So we're not there yet. And in order for us to trigger asking people to mask again, we really feel that there needs to be a reason. And we're, we're seeing, our numbers are pretty much have been staying the same. So Williston might have a surge or a real uptick. We're not seeing that in our schools. I'm not saying that we won't, we may, but we really feel that we don't want to exhaust the families in East Hampton by mandating or recommending masking if nothing has really significantly shifted. We want there to be a pivot point in order for us to move back to masking. So in our COVID response team meeting today, we had two factors that we discussed. One was the CDC, we're not waiting for the CDC to provide us with new guidance. There is current CDC guidance about different levels. And East Hampton is currently in the medium level. And we decided that if East Hampton tips into the high level of virus, then virus spread, then we would, that would trigger us to write a letter home to families stating that we strongly recommend masking, which is similar to what communities on the eastern part of the state have done. If you look, if you look at the Boston Globe today, there was an article, I think Cambridge has done something like that, Lexington, areas that are in the red according to the current CDC methodology. East Hampton is not there yet in the community and we're not there yet in our schools. So that, we felt was a distinct trigger point for families to understand. We would mandate masking if we saw a significant surge as Northampton did last week. Northampton, for those of you that don't know, had 63 cases on Wednesday last week, which was high. And then by Friday, 48 hours later, they had 139, I think, or 136, something like that. So they more than doubled. They had a, they had a 117% increase in a 48-hour period. That's a significant surge that would cause us to halt and reassess quickly what we're doing. And we may have to mandate in that situation. They were in touch with their board of health, with the epidemiologist at the state, and they recommended mandating. So that was, that was a perfect example of when you need to trigger that. But if we're not at that point, I don't want to trigger it and exhaust families that, that are wondering why, what our metric is. So those were the two things that we decided today in our COVID response team. Megan was there. She was, I think, in agreement. We also had the board of health, not the board of health. The city health department was with us, Sean Sheehan from the union, all our regular players were there. And they were all in agreement with this assessment. Megan, did I capture that?
Yeah, the only other thing that I would add is that we sort of talked about, we're looking at city dashboard.
Don't forget wastewater.
Wastewater, right? If we're looking at city dashboard information, that's just confirmed cases. But something that's unique about what Allison is reporting is that we do have the pool testing. And then the numbers that she's reporting are really all the cases. It's not just like the confirmed PCR cases. So we have a pretty, we can't say it's 100% accurate, but we have a really good idea of how many cases are happening in the school and how many students are out. And so if we see that sharp increase, it's hard to give like an exact percent increase because it depends, you know, with the number, like you can go from two to four and have a huge percent increase. But that's, I'm not sure that we want to call that a surge. So it depends a little bit where we are. If we're seeing a slow progress that we're seeing right now, you know, we're not as alarmed. If we see a larger surge, the, the group will come back together quickly and move to a mask mandate. And then that other point, I think, you know, I think to balance the public health sort of side of things of like getting people to actually do what will be helpful, I think aligning with the CDC red, high category of transmission is, is, I agree that that was the way to go.
Well, thank you for that. Can I just thank you for that explanation? And I feel better about it. You have to realize, I'm not being alarmist, but I'm just seeing, you know, different schools I'm connected to all of a sudden seeing these surges. So that's why I wanted to bring it tonight because I didn't hear that discussion. So I feel a lot better. I, I wasn't alarmed. I just wanted to bring it up. So thank you very much, Megan and Dr. Leclair.
And, and Dr. Harvey will communicate with me every Thursday on whether we're in the red zone or not and around wastewater. She can, she can give me insight into that because I don't have a real handle on that information.
So the one thing I would just, excuse me, like to interject here. I think that it is very appreciated, all the information that you guys are discussing, all the data points that you're reviewing to see what makes sense for our next steps. I, I would just say that I think, you know, when we first removed the mask mandate, if I remember correctly, you did encourage people, strongly recommend to still wear masks. And within a few days, people were not masking anymore for the majority. Not, I mean, there's still some students who are masking, but majority stopped even though you strongly recommended it. So I don't, I don't know for myself as a committee member if that's an important step to consider in the chain of events. I think that, you know, I, I don't know if you ever rescinded your strongly recommend language on mask wearing. I don't think we did. So I think currently we're within the existence of a strongly recommend wearing masks and we're seeing very few masks being worn across schools. So I, I don't think we should reconsider re-implementing a strongly recommend mask banning. I think we need to look at if the increases go up, if the numbers get put into the red within our district, that we need to immediately look at mask requirements and mandating mask wearing. I think that's the next step from my perspective. I don't think we need to look at a, a step in there that's actually where we're at currently in terms of strongly recommending wearing masks, right?
I would say, Maren, just a couple of things. When we came back from April vacation, I wrote an email where I, I wrote a message to families where I strongly recommended that when they return from vacation, staff and students should wear masks, masks particularly that first week as we return. So I think that there was a perceived end after vacation. And, you know, in my weekly update to families where I give the data point of the numbers and, you know, I, I do say things like, you know, it's, it would be great if you could wear, I think last week I was identifying if someone in your family has COVID, you should be wearing a mask at school. You know, remember to wear a mask if someone is immune compromised, just little reminders. But I think the clarification or the pivot point I'm trying to delineate that would be different is if we see significant increase in numbers. And right now, I think there is a level of, I don't want to say, I, I don't know if exhaustion is the right word, maybe malaise. You know, if people see the same number every week, kind of, you know, tracking from me and they see, oh, you know, wear my mask, whatever, it, it maybe doesn't faze them. But I think that if we have a strongly worded letter that identifies different data points and how, if there is a sharp, you know, an increase in cases that, you know, is something that people can really kind of take away like, oh, this is different. I think if we can somehow differentiate that, I think it may have more of an impact on people. And I think that, you know, I, I do think that people have relaxed mask mandates, you know, everywhere, in airports, on planes, in, in every situation. There are people that wear masks, there are people that don't. You know, I was with a group of educators that were visiting classrooms today. And I asked every, there were like, there were two teams of four of us. And I asked people, excuse me, yesterday, I said, please plan on wearing a mask when you're visiting classrooms, which is a practice that I do, a practice that all the administrators do. If we're in our offices, our masks are off, but if we're visiting kids, and particularly if I'm a guest going into someone else's classroom, I'm putting a mask on. And I didn't have one person that didn't have a mask on today. So the predominance of adults that I encountered today had masks on. So I think that, you know, we are seeing it. It still does exist in the classrooms that we're in. But I think people in their private lives are taking masks off as well. So it's, it's hard, it's a hard battle, I think.
Well, I'm just pointing out, I think that if the next step, if we do go up into the red, which is still a to be determined situation, right? The, the wastewater information is sort of plateauing a little bit with a little smaller uptick. The overall numbers are not drastically going up, some are going down. So I don't think there's a definitive thing that we're about to be in the red or that, you know, we have to plan as if we're in the red. But I'm just stating out, I think that if we do go into the red, we need to seriously consider immediately moving to a mask mandate, not just a strongly recommend wording about wearing masks. So that's, you know, we'll get there and we'll have that discussion when we do, if we do get into the red. But I'm just stating my opinion at this point right now, that that's going to be a moment to put in mask mandates and not just strongly recommend people wearing them.
Yeah, I, I think that's, that point is well taken, Maren. And when we were talking in the COVID meeting earlier, I. Yeah, I, I think that's, that point is well taken, Maren. And um when we were talking in the COVID meeting earlier, I, I was kind of um conceptualizing this as, as this immediate letter that goes out Thursday, some random Thursday, we hit the red according to the CDC. Dr. Leclerc sends this letter out. It's sort of like the um warning shot, hey, here it is, it's upon us. Um, we're at strongly recommend right now. If we see the cases go up in school, your masks are back on because we're prioritizing things like end of year events, prom, um, you know, those kinds of things. So it's like, here's the data, you're on high alert. If you want right now to make sure those events are protected, you can start masking. But if we see the cases tick up, we're right in that. That's sort of how I conceptualize it. But your point is well taken. I, I hear you.
Yeah, I mean, we're at, what, nine weeks to year, end of year? Um, so we don't have a lot of wiggle room, um, if we jump up into that red area to not then have it impacting end of year events. So I think we have to prioritize being able to get to those end of year events. Those celebrations are such a critical closure for the school year. Um, and so to be ready to require masks, um, to make sure that we might still be able to have those events at all happen with masked students and adults around, um, we need to be ready to jump to a mask mandate if we need to. That's all I'm saying. So.
I agree with you.
We don't have nine weeks left of school, correct? I'm counting. When are we getting out?
Oh, sorry. Five.
Okay. I got a little, I'm looking at a calendar.
Sorry, my math was off. I apologize.
That's okay. Uh, and but that's my point. That, that is my point, though. Um, we have five weeks left. Let's get to the end of five weeks. I mean, I think the community's done a really nice job, but we have to keep doing a really nice job. I have high hopes that this summer, all of it's going to go down. I hope it doesn't go up. Um, but let us get through the end of the school year. I know that the seniors with graduation are just hoping for really some normalcy. And it's really, this, this is a contagious, you know, virus. And we just got to watch the numbers and do what everybody can to keep those numbers down. But I agree. I think that if it starts, we will have to move fast if it begins to be a surge. I did have a question about Northampton. Um, did they, are they meeting every two weeks to look at numbers? Or did they decide on the number when the masks will come off? Or did they just say until further notice?
The mask mandate that they put in was for ten days.
Ten days. Okay. That was, that was my question. I think that's pretty good.
And they're the only one in the state, the only public school in the state that's done that. Everyone else, um, no one else has done that. Other, a few other communities that are in the red have made recommendations. And again, you can go to the Boston Globe to see.
Yeah.
Um, who those schools are. The, the final thing I would say, just to kind of pick up on a couple of points, and I said it before, but I think it's worth mentioning again. Families that are testing at home are really saving us. Because I think that so many families are testing at home and come Monday mornings. I can't tell you like how many phone calls we get from families like, oh, we tested this weekend and so and so is positive. So they're not coming to school this week. And I mean, it's a blessing in disguise for us because like they haven't been in contact with other kids. But it's because of those families that I think we're mitigating a lot of spread in the schools. And particularly the families that are testing at home and doing pooled testing during the week. We're getting two shots at, at students and adults because a lot of our adults are testing, um, you know, twice a week as well. And it's really saving us. There are a lot of communities that are not doing at-home testing. Um, I think Northampton might be one of them. Um, there are a lot of communities that didn't buy into that. Or not, not that we bought into it, but did not choose to do that. And I think that's been our saving grace.
I agree with you.
I'm pushing out like nine hundred tests every, every other week and there's two tests in a kit. So I'm giving out like nine hundred boxes of these things every other week. So we have a lot of people testing.
That's great.
Yeah. And, and that at-home testing is just, it's a, it's a godsend. Um, we've had, uh, even in my district, we do the same thing. We do the pool testing and the at-home testing. And the number of kids who don't come into the building on Monday is, um, I mean, we don't have, it's a tiny school. We don't have high numbers, but it's wonderful that they're testing before the kids even enter the building. It's keeping the spread down.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, there could be a fun, um, like congratulatory, thank you event for parents at the end of the school year. Maybe that the ice cream social should be for the, the parents. But really, you know, I actually think that might be a good point that, um, at least at the high school level, maybe some messaging could go out. Like right now, it's five weeks is the time. Be real careful. Keep your testing up. Keep your masks on if you're in the crowds. Don't miss these end of the year activities because you're out for five days in isolation.
Yeah. Excellent.
Absolutely. Yep. I have a few more um things under announcements, if I can just shift gears.
Yes, yes.
Um, so I wanted to let the committee know that we have uh selected our bus company. Um, and so I just wanted to remind everyone that we were, we went out for bid this year. We um had Durham, uh, First Student and FM Kuzmeskis requested bid packages. Um, and they attended the mandatory pre-bid meeting and indicated they would be uh submitting a bid, those three companies. Ultimately, only Durham, which is our current vendor, submitted a bid. It's a bona fide bid within budget. Dale took the extra step of contacting First Student and Kuzmeskis to inquire why they did not submit bids. Both cited concern that they could not acquire the needed buses um to service the contract in a timely manner. And when they did an analysis, they could not submit a bid that was competitive with Durham. Durham, um, for those of you that don't know, runs three bus contracts out of the East Hampton Depot, East Hampton, North Hampton, and Hampshire Regional. And so we're able to spread the overhead to do um like office staff, mechanics, rent among three contracts. And so the other two bus companies couldn't compete with that. So Durham was the um won the bid for the bus contract. And then Dale has also just finished the food service bids. And um we had one proposal for food service management and operations for next year. And the four subsequent years after that was a bona fide bid. Um, she was expecting two proposals. She reached out to the other company to find out why they did not submit. And she's awaiting a response. She hasn't heard back from them. Um, and so the, so the only bid that qualified is Chartwell's, which is our current vendor. And they're projecting they, they would have an operational surplus of fifty thousand dollars, roughly ten times that of the previous contract um because of the consolidation. And then my one other um message for tonight, my one other announcement is um it's two-part, but it has to do with Narcan. There's a community Narcan training going on Monday, May sixteenth, from six to seven PM. And I think that is um being sponsored by the East Hampton Health Department and the um Healthy Youth Coalition. So I told them I would pass that along. And then we have installed, as the mayor has, I mean, a couple, or as the City Health Department has, in a couple of city buildings, the Na- Milan box, I can't say that correctly, the Narcan boxes in our high school and middle school. And I've asked Rebecca from the Coalition to come to the May twenty-fourth meeting to um share information with the committee about those boxes and their, kind of their locations in the schools and their purpose. And I know they're in public, they're in other public sites across the city. Um, but I thought that parents might be interested in where they are in the schools. So that'll be not at the May seventeenth meeting, that's the extra meeting, but at the May twenty-fourth meeting. But she wanted me to mention this training because it happens before the May twenty-fourth meeting. So that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so now on to uh subcommittee reports, finance subcommittee minutes and updates.
Okay, so at the Finance Committee, we were able to meet and review the budget versus actuals within our FY twenty-two um budget. So we're through the first three quarters of this fiscal year um and having a really good sense of where we're at. Um, for the most part, we're tracking on track with what our budget uh projections were. Um, as we sort of probably all already know, though, um tuitions have been on a rise. Uh, and it's definitely was a part of a big jump in our next fiscal twenty-three year budget um that we had previously approved and will be reviewing again next week. Um, or whenever that is, was that later this week? I'm sorry. Um, but uh, so that is happening. Um, but so what that means is that the tuitions, the out of district, um, has also gone up in this fiscal budget. Um, we are going to be able to use, um, as we have from the state, the circuit breaker funds that comes in. Um, we had anticipated needing to use um around four hundred and forty-two thousand dollars worth of funds from that circuit breaker fund to cover the additional tuition fees. Um, it looks like we're going to need to pull in about another hundred thousand um to be able to cover the rising costs in those tuition fees. So um we do have those funds on hand and we'll be able to cover that. But that is one piece, that's one, that's probably the one uh difference between our budget and our actual costs happening in fiscal twenty-two. Um, the, um, let's see, uh, there are some other smaller expenditure stuff um that is sort of under review, um, but seems to still be tracking on track. Okay. Uh, we did have some additional savings overall for staffing uh because of um inability to hire certain positions, um, even though we were trying. Uh, but a lot of those funds are already being spent into the um cost of the increase that, for the staffing costs uh based on the union negotiation. So there's a little bit of additional savings there, but not a whole lot that's coming in um for that. Um, the tuition, the transportation is another one that we're obviously tracking. Uh, most all of that has been paid out for FY twenty-three or twenty-two already. Um, and we're pretty much on track there. Um, and so that's, that's sort of a, a good situation that a lot of these increases in costs for transportation that we're anticipating for next year. And obviously, um, thank you, Dr. Leclerc, for announcing back on that budget um item. Uh, and that, that contract is now locked in and does match what we budgeted, but um isn't worse than we had budgeted. So um that's a really important thing for next year with the increase that we had anticipated. Um, we were still uncertain about where that budget item was going to be for fiscal twenty-three. Um, so it's great that that came in basically at the budget cost that we had anticipated. Um, and still hoping for the mayor and the city council to approve all of those budgets. Um, otherwise, that's, we're, we're mostly on track um and in a good situation for FY twenty-two.
Thank you. Any other subcommittee updates? Lori?
Um, I would like to let everyone know, if you didn't know already, that our um last week's event, which we had to postpone to the Cinco de Mayo from the fourth, was extremely successful. We had more than two hundred students participating um for both times. And that was our last time that we'll be going to the different schools because next year in the fall, um, I'll be thrilled to be able to host an event that will all go to our new Mountain View School. Speaking of that, um, I have set up a meeting for the nineteenth with Dr. Leclerc, Jeff Bag, who is our city planner, uh Lucy Friedman Bell, and um Scott Kavanaugh, who's a teacher as well as on the Man Hand Rail Trail Committee. And we have invited um the new head of our new school, Dr. Jill Pescini Torcia, to talk about arrival and dismissal, especially of our walkers and bike riders, to make it the safest possible. We're also going to plan a walking route map. And we're going to discuss the needs um that crossing guards will have. So we want to be proactive to encourage people to go to the school in ways that are healthier than just riding in a bus. So I'm excited to move forward with that. So um, thank you for letting me talk about our event last week and what we have in store.
Excellent. Do we have any other updates? Yep. All right. Um, so now we're at other. Do we have an other?
I do have an other. I have my uh bi-weekly PTO update. Uh, last week was Teacher Appreciation Week and the PTO provided a lunch from Tanda, Tandem and Hot Oven Cookies. Um, this Friday is the Bingo Night at Nortalk Park. It's going to be really fun. It sounds great. It's that pavilion by the, the splash pad. Um, I believe it's five dollars per person to get in or twenty dollars for a whole family. And there will be pizza and lemonade and popcorn and raffle and games and asylum auction and prizes. Um, so bring cash and be ready to put your bingo hat on and um play ferociously. And I, I am going to be volunteering for a little bit of the time there, so can also, uh, I don't know, maybe I'll get to pull some of the numbers and have some bingo. That's the PTO update. Um, and I also wanted to say, um, about the uh knocks and boxes, I also have fielded a few questions, just randomly walking around, nothing to, no correspondence related to this, but just questions about like, why would we put them in a school? Um, and, you know, do I have any public health knowledge about this? And I just wanted to say how great I think this harm reduction approach is. We have great science on harm reduction uh in public health. And um we know that there's really uh no danger to students or to faculty and staff um for something like this. And the uh potential for benefit is huge. Um, and, you know, I think there's maybe, and I, I can't wait to hear Rebecca talk about this, like they don't have to be um used at the school. Uh, students who are worried about a family member or a loved one um can, you know, will have access to take it home and to, and to use it. And there'll be plenty of information for students to use them appropriately in situations where they need it. Um, it really is a great thing. So I'm, I'm so, I was so excited to see that program in place.
Thank you. Any other other? It's going to be a short meeting. All right. Okay, so our.
Can I just say one, one, one thing? Because I know people ask sometimes.
Absolutely.
At the May twenty-fourth meeting, um, we're also planning to do the um special ed CPAC presentation that some of you have been waiting for.
Thanks. That's good to hear.
It's either that one or it's the June one, but I think it's that one. But I'll double check. But it's, but it's coming. It's on the radar.
I do think it is the end of the month one. Um, but yeah, we should recheck. Okay, all right. Right. Matters for action. Um, hit it, Megan.
We have a few. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the April twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two regular session minutes with the stipulation to withhold executive session minutes until matters are resolved.
I second that.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Mayor LaChapelle?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
And Cindy Kozinski, aye.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the out-of-state field trip request for EHS to New York City on May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two.
I second that.
Okay. Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Cindy Kozinski, aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the school payroll dated five-five, twenty-twenty-two in the amount of five hundred and five, five hundred and fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars and fifty-two cents.
I second that.
Uh, Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Ben?
And Hershey, aye.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Cindy Kozinski, aye.
And last, I'd like to make a motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated five-five, twenty-twenty-two in the amount of a hundred and fifty-five thousand, five, two hundred and fifty-two dollars and forty-four cents.
I second that.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Cindy Kozinski, aye. All right. Um, so now all we're going to do is announce that on five-seventeen, we are going to.
we are going to have a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year twenty-twenty-three budget. And then our next regular school committee meetings will be May twenty-fourth and June fourteenth. All right, so do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right.
Race.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, buenos noches.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, good night.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Mayor?
Mary LaChapelle, aye.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, good night.
And Cindy Kuzensky, aye. Have a good night, everybody. Stay safe. Let's keep the numbers down.
A buss.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.